I want to call to order the January 28th, 2020 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland II Board of Trustees. If I can please now have a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we convene in regular session for the purpose of discussing student appeals and student admission requests into the district's [inaudible].
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker, seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Yeah, hand vote since tonight everybody's logged in. Raise your hands high, please. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now convene into executive session. Kobe was a celebrity and very active in the community. It's just a reminder, I think, for all of us that tomorrow's not promised and that we need to make the most out of our lives every day and live them to the maximum. So if we can just take a moment of silence in regards to that. Thank you. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I might also add that Kobe spent his last minutes taking care of youth, which is an admirable thing. Next, I'm going to have the approval of our agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the January 28th, 2020 board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Motion passes six to one. Next, we will have our special recognitions. Dr. Davis. Oh, so we need to... I'm going to actually push this. Sorry, we just had one tonight. Board members, if I can kind of have the privileges, the board chair, whenever we have our special guests come to do that, if we can maybe stop the meeting and have a special recognition at that time, do I have any objection to that? Okay. So we will move on now to the consent agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for January 28th, 2020.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Agostini, seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have public participation. I have Latasha Tarleton signed up. Thank you. And I just want to remind you that you have three minutes. It is videotaped for perpetuity, so it will be on YouTube.
Okay. Look at your airplane app.
You look great. Please refrain from using any staff names or specifics.
Okay. Well, my name is Latasha Tarleton, and I'm just here to address you guys. I am a bus driver. I am an activities bus driver, actually. And I just want to speak to you guys for a minute as far as the money that was set aside and that you're giving to all the permanent full-time employees. And just let you know that I am in activities, and that department in transportation is considered part-time, but there's about 30 of us, and all of us are part-time, and none of us are really given a avenue for, you know, full-time because of how it's set up, which I understand that, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we are there and that we would also appreciate being appreciated as everyone else is, and that we do come in, we feel in when needed. And like myself, we're not offered any benefits, but when you do come and you make the hours, you're offered medical. And I take full advantage of it, and there's a few of us that do take full advantage of whatever opportunities the district gives us. It's just that we don't get the time off, and when, you know, there's inclement weather there and time is forgiven and they get paid, the district, we don't get any of that, which that's understandable. We sign up for it. I get it. And that's fine, but it's just that, you know, when it's like little bonuses to say, hey, you know, we know you're hurrying, we're working, thank you, and I just wanted to say that sometimes, you know, think about us in activities, and we would appreciate that, too.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. And of course, we appreciate all of our bus drivers and the work that you do every day. Next, we have our legislative update. Dr. Miley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to give you a brief update on what's going on at the State House as far as what we know. As you know, the governor gave his state of the state last week. One of the important things that we picked notice of is he suggested a $3,000 per teacher raise. That averages out about 7% raise. That's more than last year. Obviously, that's a larger percentage for the lower-salaried teachers and smaller percentage for the higher-income teachers, but it's a large increment, and on top of what happened last year, it would be a positive thing. He also suggested some increased funding for lower-income children in 4K to expand that program. He gave... He said that education funding is important, but they'll keep on working on it, just like education reform is important, but didn't give any specifics. The other news at the State House is the education reform bill. I've noticed that they call it reform instead of improvement, but there's a lot being discussed. It was debated for 12 hours last week, and they took up three amendments, no votes were made on those three amendments, but they were primarily about putting teachers and students on the Board of Education, deleting the five days of additional teaching that they had proposed because there was no funding attached to it, and then the discussion on the Teachers' Bill of Rights. One of the bills we've talked about before is the Senate Bill 556. We're following that one closely. That's the... And I know I'm biased, so I will show my box, soapbox here, but it's the Tuition Tax Credit in Disguise Bill. The fiscal impact of that bill is supposedly $225 million on the first year of implementation and $450 million the second year of implementation on the public education school system. So the funding for K through 12 for all public schools would have a substantial hit with 556, so we're following that closely. About the other bills, there was one that was... We were asked, and we get asked, as a lot of departments, but finance gets asked frequently on the fiscal impact of various bills, and they have been asked by the legislature, what's the impact? And so they ask districts, and so we respond to that. And one of them last week was a statewide assessment and what would be the fiscal impact. In fact, we asked John Arnold here in our offices to help us respond to this, and he said that it was proposed the removal of social study assessments in grade three through eight. That was not going to be a big financial burden, but the other changes in that bill would be substantial increases and restrictions on our ability to benchmark, so we're following that one closely. And other than that, the State House is busy, was busy today at 2:00, talking about S-419, and they're going to take up 556 on Thursday. I'll be glad to answer any other questions. There was one bill that was introduced that was interesting. It was a bill suggested by Representative Newton to amend the code of laws to add school board members to the state retirement system. So I thought you might be interested in that one. And then...
Is that to the state retirement or to state insurance?
State retirement system.
Because we currently are part of state retirement. We're not part of the state insurance program.
They said here state retirement, and it would be... Well, it would be... You'd be eligible as that for state health and dental.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
And then Senator McLeod introduced a bill to help to pay increase... For a pay increase in the National Board Certified Teachers. I'll be glad to answer any other questions, if you have any.
Board members, Dr. Holmes.
No questions, but I do want to go back on something. Last week at the board meeting, it was mentioned about the build S-419, and it was made in the audience that you wanted your board members to participate in that, and we also said that we needed the teachers to do the grassroots thing that they have done. Since that time, myself and Mr. Shad, we went down there and participated in part of a rally against the 419 bill as part of that at the State House for the Black Caucus of School Boards, and we did that. Additionally, I made a promise that on the last forum that I would come out publicly against that, and I did so in a letter. I wrote a letter to all of the senators and the board governing over that in petition to that, asking some very important questions about how things would affect public education. Now, having said that, we still need teachers and everybody to get on board with making your voice known about this bill. This bill will have devastating factors for public school. As I said last week, we're just seven people up here, but you're the public. You elect people. You elect everyone. In addition to that, my next question would be, do you really want to lose your right to have a voice when you vote? I don't like everything our senators do down there. I don't like everything our house members do down there, but I can't go there and say, okay, I don't like them, and they're not doing a good job, because I don't think you're doing a good job with 419. Can I just kick you off for that? The answer to that is no, because we're supposed to be a democracy. And if democracy means anything to you, if public school means anything to you, you have to make your voice known about this bill. They are rushing this bill through because, again, you have to remember that a lot of people are going to private... The private sector will gain from the public school process. In other words, there's money to be made by privatizing school. I'm going to say that again. There's money to be made by privatizing schools, and if you don't think that that's part of what this is about, you're fooling yourself. Get on this. Take this seriously. This is a devastating bill for public education. I had to say that, and I made a promise. Mr. Shad made a promise, and the board made a promise, and we're all in opposition... Well, most of us are in opposition of that. So I just had to put that out there before the room clears and there's no wards, because y'all know y'all go home after that. But thank you.
All right. Other comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson, and then...
I'm glad that Dr. Holmes did make that comment. Just want also to place this on the record as well. Although Dr. Holmes and Mr. Shad had an opportunity to go to the press conference to represent school board members, many of us were not aware that the press conference was occurring, so maybe if the news had gotten out to many of the other school board members, we could have been on board as well. So I wanted to put that out there as well. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Dr. Miley, for keeping us abreast and giving us the highlights of what goes on down at the State House, but just wanted to also share that on the behalf of the state school board of trustees, there was a press conference as well, and editorial in Sunday's paper that was talking about the same thing that Dr. Holmes is talking about, I think, a few days before the Black Caucus. They both had press conferences, and at the crux of the issue was, yeah, the violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1965. So thank you for sharing that, Dr. Holmes.
Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I did want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. The South Carolina School Board Association had a press conference. We did not get word of it in time. The executive director, Scott Price, did share with myself as the vice president of the South Carolina Black Caucus and Cheryl Harris, the president. His deepest apologies because it was sort of... They needed to hurry and get down to the State House as quickly as possible. So a few of the leadership, our regional director, Ms. Mackey was there as well, and so they attended it, but we felt as a caucus that it was necessary for us to do it. So it was put together very quickly. My understanding is that these press conferences, the requests have to be made really two or three weeks in advance, but they gave us a courtesy and allowed us to come in on Monday. We did take certain efforts to contact the remainder of the school board members. Probably could have done a better job of that, but from a social media standpoint, we did put information out there on the Facebook page that we have. We did just change over officers, and so in terms of the current paid board members, I do regret that we didn't share all of that, but hopefully news travels fast in that sense because we did have a number of people there, some who were not even on our little text thread. They also showed up, and NAACP showed up as well. So it was put out there, but our voices are not going to be silenced, and just because folks weren't able to attend that press conference doesn't mean they still can't use their voice and contact the senators who are looking at this right now. I applaud the School Boards Association, who did prepare a legal opinion that was presented to each and every senator today, I believe.
Actually, Senator McLeod was responsible for making sure that all of the senate got a copy of that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
She did that.
So they have it?
They do.
And it may be, you know, I echo Dr. Holmes, it really very well could be a Voting Rights Act violation, and I hope that the General Assembly understands that. A Voting Rights Act, Voting Rights of 1965 violation, when you undo elections from the constituents of these school boards. We're talking about takeover of school boards. That's what our main focus was. But I did want to ask Dr. Miley, with your vast financial experience and all that you have done in your capacity in being involved with this, with government, hopefully it's a simple question. What is a voucher?
A voucher is when you get a tax credit on your income tax bill for a fee that you've paid to a private school. So you've paid $1,000 to tuition, you get $1,000 tax credit, not a deduction, but a tax credit off your income tax bill. So tax collections at the state level go down $1,000. You get to pay your bill with the $1,000 of your... So you're... You get to take the tax deduction, so you don't have to pay $1,000. Instead of sending your $1,000 to the DOR, you send your $1,000 to the school.
How much different is a voucher than this tuition transfer thing that is floating around now?
The other one has a longer name.
Mr. Shad?
Thank you.
Can I interject?
Yes.
I think what we're trying to say is the... It's being sold as a free private school. It is not. There is no credit on the front end. It's a tax deduction, but it is not. It takes money away from public schools, and it does not make private school free. I think that's what you're trying to get to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Actually, some of them are set up by quote-unquote scholarships, scholarship organizations. So you give your donation to a scholarship organization, you get a tax credit for that donation, and then a student applies to that organization for a scholarship, which is funded by your tax credit, to go to this school. Now, if that was... Depending on how that scholarship is awarded and who's eligible for that scholarship, kind of makes it whether it's really a legit tax credit, tuition tax credit, or truly a scholarship to help people who need it. So that's kind of the crux of the issue.
Thank you, sir. Can I go home now?
Not up to me. Other board members, questions or comments? Okay, yes, you can go home now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shad.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion with regard to Section 10, that 10.3, the report on school resource officers, that we amend the agenda to reflect that 10.3 school resource officers become 10.1, and that 10.1, the report on the charter school, become 10.3.
So you're making a motion to amend the agenda to move item 10.3 to 10.1 and 10.1 to 10.3?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Shad. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? If we can have the vote at this time? With that said, I do want to recognize Sheriff Lot for being in the crowd. Sheriff Lot, thanks for being with us today. Representative Howard also here with us today. We'll get to you in a second, sir. I think she's still working. It didn't pop up yet. Oh, Dr. Caution Parker. That's what happens when you surprise your board secretary. All right. If we can take the vote at this time? Motion passes seven zero, so we've amended the agenda. At this time, I'm going to go back to our special recognitions, and I think Representative Howard, you have a special recognition that you want to present today. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can give you more time. Okay. Come on. Do you want to come up to the podium?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Chairman Manning.
Yes.
Members of the Board of School Commissioners, Dr. Davis, and the entire District II family. The House of Representatives today paused in its deliberation to honor and congratulate Dr. Monica Elkins on her retirement after 30-plus years of dedicated service in education. Her hard work, commitment, and skills as a teacher's assistant, a teacher assistant principal, college adjunct professor, and educational consultant has played an integral part of the success of our schools, and we are truly grateful that she offered her services through the South Carolina Public School System for the betterment of our students and our state. We extend our deepest appreciation to Dr. Elkins for a job well done and offer our continued best wishes as she continues to serve on the Richland II School Board of Commissioners. We are proud to take this opportunity to recognize Dr. Elkins' many accomplishments throughout her career and wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Signed by the Speaker of the House and the Clerk of the House. And I'd like to present this resolution to Dr. Elkins. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Howard, thanks for being with us today for that special recognition, and congratulations, Dr. Elkins Johnson. I look forward to retirement one day as well. Next on our agenda, we have executive session items. If I can have a motion on item 9.1.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair.
She starstruck.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the student admissions requesting to the district's adult education program.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Dr. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next, item 9.2, student appeals.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for student number one, Blythewood Academy, for the remainder of the year.
You're doing that one separate, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the end of your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Motion's been made by Dr. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? All right. Once you verify your motion, then we'll take the vote.
It's correct.
All right. If everyone will please vote. Motion passes four yes, three no. All right, Dr. Holmes.
Mr. Chair, for student number two, return to homeschool with services.
Okay. You're doing the rest of them again.
Student number three, return to homeschool with services. Student number four, return to homeschool with services. And student number five, deny the appeal.
All right. The motion's been made by Dr. Holmes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? All right.
The motion is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll take the vote, please. Motion passes unanimous, seven zero. There's no need for item 9.3, and under our amended agenda, we will now hear from our... About our school resource officers. Sheriff Lot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank y'all for allowing me to be here. I know the governor talked last week about the state of the state. Tomorrow, Steve Benjamin gets to do it about the city. I get to do it about the SROs in Richland II tonight. I want to begin by saying thank you for the partnership that we've had for many years. This is my 24th year sheriff, and I don't think we could have had a better partnership between Richland II and the Sheriff's Department. Our goals and mission have always been the same, and that's to make sure that we have safe environments for our teachers, safe environment for our students, and our students learn. And our school resource officers there to make sure that we partner with you to reach those goals and carry out our mission. We work with everybody here, but I'm going to have to point out Mr. Cleveland Smith, that is our daily contact, and he's a joy to work with. He makes our job easier by the fact that he's always responding to whatever we need, and it's just been a great partnership. With me tonight, I've got Captain John Ewing, who's in charge of the SRO program.
Yes.
And SRO Tim Ford was somewhere here. He's one of your SROs that we've got, Mother Road. Right now, we have 27 SROs in School District II covering 22 schools. We just added four new schools when the semester started. That was Killian, Langford, Lonnie B. Nelson, and Catawba Trail. And what's significant about those four schools is the grant came in from the state to hire four SROs. We were able to put them in in a very short period of time and get them in place when school started back for the second semester. We just had our annual sheriffs conference last week with all the 46 sheriffs in the state, and one of the biggest complaints that they all had was they could not find school resource officers. They've got the money. They can't find people put in the school, so it doesn't do any good if the officer's not in the school. We're unique and fortunate in Richland County in that we have a waiting list of people that are already processed, ready to come to work. Our goal is to help these young people stay on the right track, and then when some of them do stray, not to penalize them the rest of their life, but to make sure that they take advantage of the alternative programs that we've got, particularly our youth arbitration program, our conflict resolutions. We push them to go through these programs. That's what we want to do, is make sure that they learn from their mistakes. I did an interview today, and I got asked, "Why did I become a cop?" It's because I got arrested at 16 years old for egging police cars. And that turned my life around. So I am a product of a diversionary program in Aiken. I had to wash a lot of police cars and had to run a lot of wind sprints at football practice. But it made an impact on my life, and it helped me to where I'm at today. So that's why I'm so passionate about our diversionary programs, is because I want young people to have the same advantage that I had growing up. And so we strengthen that every day with our youth services, and we put people in there, and we just want to make sure that these kids have an opportunity that all of us have had. You know, we've had 15 threats this year. Not one of them been credible, but we investigate every one of them, and we investigate them very quickly, and we make sure that the word gets out. And I will tell you, recently, we had one, and I got calls from a lot of parents who were so pleased that they got something from the school very quickly, saying, "Now, we've had a threat, it's being investigated, send your kids to school," basically. And parents want to hear that. They want to hear it from you, and they want to hear it from me, and they're getting that. So, you know, we've only had five weapons from schools this year in Richland Two, with only one of them being a gun. There's not many school districts can say that, except those in Richland County, because the school resource officers. Just think every day how many kids go to school and do good things that we just never hear about. What do we hear about is one of them when they stumble. Look how many go every single day, that they're there to learn, and they're there to police the schools. When you hear that we found drugs or guns from a school, it's not because my guys are that good, it's because somebody, another student's told on them. The kids police the schools themselves, and that's the relationship that we have strived to build with our young people, is that they know us, they trust us, and they're going to come to us. And I think we're being successful at that, just by looking at the numbers, what we've got, that shows that we're being successful. We just have to continue doing that. I'm not going to slow down. Our school resource officers are not going to slow down. We're going to keep doing what we're doing. We're going to continue to work with you to make sure that our schools are safe and it's a good learning institution for everybody. So, you know, I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sheriff Lot. Board members, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
And you just commented on Sheriff Lot. Thank you, first of all, so much for coming this evening. But you made the comment that there have been 15 threats against schools, and I think it's been in the Midlands. And this, from what I read, you know, in the newspaper, our reports, the kids are just kidding. And they say that. Now, how do we get the message to them that it's not a joke?
Well, we're doing as much as we can. That's why we publicize it. Every time there's a threat, even though we know it's a joke and it's not true, we want to get it out to the public, because we're hoping parents will take that and push them to talk to their kids and young people. I have a 16-year-old. I've talked to her about it. That's not something you joke about, and we have to get that word out. But they think it's funny, they think it's a joke, they think that's, you know, they think they're not going to get caught. We catch them all. We do.
Do you see something that we could be doing differently in our schools, with our teachers, with our administrators, that could convince these kids it's not funny?
Continue to put the word out. I know that Lexon Richland Five put a video out that they distributed to the parents and to the kids and played it in the schools, where they had kids talk, they had SROs talk. We were included in that, saying, "This is serious. You're going to get arrested, and there's going to be consequences if you make a threat." That may be something. But we just got to get that word out. I don't think all of our young people understand how serious it is today, and we do have to take it serious, because we're not going to be, it's not going to happen where somebody makes a threat and we ignore it, and then something happens. We're going to check them all out.
Dr. Holmes?
I'd just like to publicly say, "Thank you, Sheriff Lot. I appreciate you being the sheriff for Richland County. I appreciate your department and everything that you do to keep us safe. You are, to me, you're probably one of the hardest-working sheriffs that I know. On a personal level and on a public level, I appreciate you. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you."
Other board members, questions, comments? Sheriff Lot, thanks for coming out to speak to us today.
Can I go home?
You can go wherever you want.
Again, I appreciate this opportunity. I know we do this yearly, and I enjoy, I like coming out here and being able to kind of give you an idea of what we're going on, because it is success stories. We read about the bad stuff, that's what we hear, but there's so many more success stories. And please, I welcome you to come to a DARE graduation. It will brighten your day. It'll make your day just to see these kids and how much they get out of that DARE program.
Sheriff Lot, we appreciate your team, but we certainly appreciate you personally taking the time to do these presentations with us, and just shows the depth of our partnership and how much we do work together, that you would take the time to come out, present this personally for your department. So thank you again, and you're welcome to go wherever you would like to go, sir.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, next on our agenda, we have item 10.2, our budget timeline.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, presenting our budget timeline this evening will be Dr. Miley.
I thought maybe you really did go home, Dr. Miley.
Just wishful thinking. Oh, thank y'all, I apologize. I lost track. I was thinking I was following some, the charter school. We have put together, as we always do, a budget timeline. It outlines the various meetings, events that we'll go through as we develop the budget, the committees and the councils that we'll talk to and get input from and inform them. We've outlined the board meeting dates, in which we'll have some public input sessions. You know, in the past, we started these. They're not officially required by law, but they're opportunities for the public to come and just talk to us if they have issues or thoughts about our budget process or the district in general. As always, what's happened is things change. We'll be either slower or faster, or the legislature will be slower or faster. So we may have to amend this. This is a draft, this is a working document, and anytime we update this, we'll inform you and send you an updated document and make sure everybody is aware of that, and with plenty of notice. Obviously, the most important ones are as we get through to the process, where we have official public hearings and readings of, the two readings of the board's approval, hopefully, of the budget, and then we'll take it to county council. We usually get a timeline from the county council prior to this, in which they outline the timelines expected of us. We haven't heard from them yet, but I'm sure that we'll be hearing from them pretty soon.
Sorry. There was something much more entertaining than you. You've been upstaged, for sure.
He can have my seat if he wants. I am going to go home now.
The most entertaining budget timeline I've ever seen.
It's going to be downhill from here, I know.
Yeah, so, all right, board members, other questions or comments for Dr. Miley on the budget timeline?
Just a quick question. Did we get the survey?
I was afraid you'd see that, yes.
Okay, because I didn't see that on my email.
I did not get to that yesterday, so I was hoping to get it yesterday. Had a busy day, so we'll be sending out that priority survey to y'all.
You can come out in front of the room if you'd like. There we go.
We'll be sending that out to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other board members, questions for Dr. Miley before we send him on to his seat this time, not home? Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I do, Representative Howard, I want to say again, thank you. Our Richland County delegation is always extremely supportive of education in the state of South Carolina, and we appreciate your efforts and all of those on the Richland County delegation. I think some of our issues come maybe from some other parts of the state, not Richland County on this, so thank you for your support. Next, we will have our charter school report. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Dr. Mills, who was here this evening to present the annual budget, annual report regarding the charter school. Dr. Mills?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Richland Two Board of Trustees, Dr. Davis, and the executive staff and the Richland Two community. As Dr. Davis said, I'm here this evening to give the annual report for the charter school. There it is.
Dr. Mills, excuse me, will you introduce your board for us real quick?
I sure will.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
In fact, it's the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have kept my mouth shut.
I'm giving myself, okay.
I apologize.
Don't phonics here, let's see. That's not it. That's not it. All right, with our school board, we have elections every year. We have four one-year, three one-year. Ms. Williams serves as our chair. She was reelected this year. Our new member this year is Mr. Darryl Gordon, who's a community volunteer. He's here this evening. Mr. Gordon is probably, for me, to a lot of you all, he's been in SICs and, you know, at Round Top and Westwood and probably everywhere else, right? And so we snatched him this year to help us out. We also have Ms. Thompson, who's not here this evening, as a Realtor, who's new to our board. And Dr. Guy, we always love having a sitting principal, if possible, to sit with us, to help us with our ideas on the board. That's the only three board members that's here this evening. Few of the others had other obligations, couldn't be here tonight. Obviously, our liaison, Dr. Caution Parker, who's on your board, she's there as well. Richland Two Charter High School mission statement and vision statement. The staff and I sat down a while back to revise this a little bit, just with some of the changes that we're making and things that we have to do. So I won't read it, obviously, because it's our mission statement and our vision statement. You all have it in your package as well. One of the things that I wanted to do this year that is different from years previous, I would always show you so many slides of where we were in 2015 and 16 and 17 and 18. You all are very aware that we have become a comprehensive support and improvement school, also known as CSI. I wanted to do the definition before I said CSI, not to throw anyone off. It's not a crime scene investigation. But with that, we are working diligently and trying to improve our school. With that status, we have a transformation coach from the State Department of Education who resides in my building. Every single day, she follows my schedule. If I'm there 2:45, she's there as well. Along with that came additional funds from the State Department. I think this year I have a little, around $180,000 I need to spend for improvements, whether they're resources, staff, whatever the case may be. A part of that that we did this year that we've never had, I actually hired a science teacher this year. The school's never had a science teacher since it began, and so I was able to hire a science teacher, equip the lab with some of these funds. And one real quick story, I did not know until I hired her. She was actually my middle school science teacher in 1979 in Darlington.
Oh, wow.
So 40 years ago, I still, she's still here, but she's doing a great job. What I wanted to show was the two-year trend. Instead of showing the slides I was showing in the past, our two-year trend, it's not a pretty story, but it's our story, and I'm not going to hide it, can't hide it, it's publicized. But I will tell you through the rest of the slides of what we're doing to try to improve this. Our overall rating last year for 17, 18, and 18, 19 remained the same, unfortunately, as unsatisfactory. I stand here as the principal of that school, not pleased to be the principal of an unsatisfactory school that's status and such, and we're working to move that. The academic achievement highlights our English and math EOC scores from 2018 and 19. We did have a slight drop there, obviously, but the key thing, they were looking at how many points that were allowed, and we are very short of getting those points based on some of the EOC scores. And so we put things in place, and I'll share a little bit of that in a second, of how we're trying to better improve that. Preparing for success, our science and social studies, again, the science teacher that I have this year, hopefully will help us move those numbers. I still do not have a U.S. history teacher. However, I have a phenomenal person who's working in the lab, Ms. Cupstead, who, she started to goal-set and track our U.S. history students in the absence of a teacher, and we're seeing some outstanding work going on with our U.S. history students in regards to where they are and what they're doing now. What we're doing is trying to build those relationships and ensure that the students realize we're there to help them, push them as best we can. Graduation rate, it is still not where it needs to be, obviously. We know the state requires a 70% for all high schools, and we're graded and judged like any other high school, so that is obviously on our radar to make sure we increase our graduation rate. A lot of the students that we've had in the past coming to us have been students who were either struggling at their school, looking for something different. So there's a lot of variety of reasons students come to us. What I'm doing a little bit more now, and I'll share you when I get to the enrollment, enrollment has gone down based on some of the strategies I've done. So there's good in that, and there's some bad in that at the same time. College and career readiness, again, we did have a slight increase there from the 2018 versus 2019, and we're proposing to increase that this year with some of the strategies that we have in place. And our student engagement, though we are unsatisfactory, our students still care for us, and they're engaged. We're trying our best, and I like to see that we have the four out of five. I'd like to see five out of five. So we're looking at the areas where our points are going to grow and what we can do to improve our school. Based on those slides, we have three goals. These goals are not only the goals of the school, it also was reported as a part of our special projects application. A charter school has a special projects application, which is very similar to a school renewal plan in a traditional school. And of course, our goals are going to fall in line to increase our graduation rate by a minimum of 5%, trying to be realistic with it, but obviously, that's a minimum. I would love to jump hurdles on that, to the point where we reach our 70% graduation rate or higher each consecutive year after that. Our second goal, of course, is to increase our EOC scores, because again, these are where we earn our points of a C or better, by the minimum of 25% in each of the EOC courses each year until we've reached that 100% goal. Some of our goals are lofty, but I have to shoot for the stars, of course, if we're going to improve this school. And our third goal, connected to the last slide, was to increase, I'm sorry, our college and career readiness, obtaining the 20 out of 25 points. I would a little bit more aggressive with this one, because some of the things that the staff is doing on that, they're doing a phenomenal job in trying to increase our college and career readiness points earned on the report card. I copied this slide, so I apologize for it not being as clear as some of the others, but the graduation goal at the top, some of our SMART goals, this was helped being created by myself and our transformation coach. In this slide, the different icons to the left-hand side, we looked at that as a staff and said, "Where's our weight? Where do you fit in in your classroom or your position in the school to help us move the school?" Obviously, we all picked different ones that pertain to us. We all had a graduation school sticker in our hand, because we're all responsible for that and have a part in that. Our percentage up here was 31%, with the goal, of course, getting it to 20, I'm sorry, 70%. Academic achievement goals, the first one talks about our English EOCs. I think it says 34.1. Want to increase that as well, as well as our algebra. Preparing for success, here we talk about our biology, and then the last one for preparing for success, our U.S. history. And the last one I just mentioned was the college and career readiness. That's where we had a little bit more of a jump than the other areas, but we're looking to increase in all. With our overall score of 25, we do realize it takes 40 points to get out of that unsatisfactory area to get at least... or higher each consecutive year after that. Our second goal, of course, is to increase our EOC scores, because again, these are where we earn our points of a C or better, by a minimum of 25% in each of the EOC courses each year until we've reached that 100% goal. Some of our goals are lofty, but I have to shoot for the stars, of course, if we're going to improve this school. And our third goal, connected to the last slides, was to increase, I'm sorry, our college and career readiness, obtaining the 20 out of 25 points. I would a little bit more aggressive with this one because some of the things that the staff is doing on that, they're doing a phenomenal job in trying to increase our college and career readiness points earned on the report card. I copied this slide, so I apologize for it not being as clear as some of the others. But the graduation goal at the top, some of our SMART goals. This was helped being created by myself and our transformation coach. In this slide, the different icons to the left-hand side, we looked at that as a staff and said, where's our weight? Where do you fit in in your classroom or your position in the school to help us move the school? Obviously, we all picked different ones that pertain to us. We all had a graduation school sticker in our hand because we're all responsible for that and have a part in that. Our percentage up here was 31% with the goal, of course, getting it to 20, I'm sorry, 70%. Academic achievement goals. The first one talks about our English EOCs. I think it says 34.1. Want to increase that as well, as well as our algebra. Preparing for success, here we talk about our biology. And then the last one for preparing for success, our U.S. history. And the last one I just mentioned was the college and career readiness. That's where we had a little bit more of a jump than in the other areas, but we're looking to increase in all. With our overall score of 25, we do realize it takes 40 points to get out of that unsatisfactory area to get at least to below average. So that's a short-term minimal goal to earn points everywhere we can to improve our report card. My CSI transformation coach tells us we're in that position because we are part of the 5%, below 5% of the failing schools throughout the state. And that's among not only charter schools, but any high schools. We're classified in trakes just like everyone else. And so we're at the bottom 5%. My goal is to get out of that bottom 5%. I tell her often, lovingly, I'm trying to work her out of a job, at least in my building. She'll have another school. I want her to be that CSI in somebody else's school. You know, I'll email her later wherever she goes. But we love her, she helps out a lot, but I'm ready for her to go. And that's based on us doing well, of course. This slide, you can tell from the top, it's a CSI school progress monitoring tool. We are required by the State Department of Education to do a quarterly progress monitoring, all the things that we're doing. The very top box, it says improvement priority number one. In parentheses, and the title side just says, "From the CAGIA Diagnose Review", formerly known as Advanced Ed. We are having a diagnostic review through Advanced Ed or CAGIA, March 1st through the 4th. So I am preparing now to have these guys come into our building to tell us what we're doing, what can we do to improve. So I'm going to have additional help coming into the building to give us guidelines and structure and what to do. That's why there's nothing there. That will be added once we have directed from them or suggestions from them. But again, going to our interim performance goals, those goals you'll see match the same goals I just had, so I won't repeat them, but they're going to fall in line. The key thing with this document, we have to identify action plans and activities. So I have different things. First one there being quarterly benchmarks. I spoke to Dr. Davis about a year and a half ago, and we were talking about T21. He told me about that, and so I realize all the other schools are doing it as well, and we can benefit from the same thing, obviously. So we're giving out benchmarks. We did it in October, and we actually do it again this week. They're taking benchmark tests again this week. And with those results, we're finding ways and strategies how we're going to continue to move our students, find out where they are and where we need to take them and how we're going to get them there. The funding source, again, the State Department has given me the grant or the, they call it technical support funds, and how to spend that money to programs, help, support, teachers, staff, whatever the case may be. And our data source is going to tell us how and why, how our money was used. Those three bottom boxes where it says October baseline data, February, and then May. We only have data right now for October because obviously February is not here yet. But once we have our baseline data in October, we've been tracking November, December, and January monthly on a different sheet so that we can be prepared for our February numbers, and I'm going to show you that on the next couple of slides. Some of the data that we've used at the top left-hand side, and those two blanks to the right, as you notice, that's the February and May. That's why they're blank. People tell me, you don't leave a blank screen, but I wanted to indicate that something's going to go in those screens. It just blanked today because it's not February or May. But with our benchmark testing, of course, we have scores of A, B, C, D, and F and a percentage of students on that first benchmark and where they landed. Our algebra and our biology were not doing so well. I did not put a slide up with our, excuse me, November, December, and January. Even though it was not a benchmark, I have teachers let me know, where are your students in the class in those subjects each month? At the end of each month. And so those numbers are changing. Obviously, our goal is to get those scores to that C or higher level based on our EOC scores to affect our report card. Below that, we have the school attendance. And I know one of the presentations one year, we had some questions or concerns about the attendance because I did make a change with the attendance. We've increased the attendance probably three times, almost four times what it used to be or had to be. And so that's been showing beneficial. Our percentage of attendance on a weekly basis to the right, 90%, 84%. It started dropping up and down just a little bit. I've put in incentives recently to get students to come to school because when I have them in the building, I can better support them and move them a little bit faster. One of the things that we did recently with attendance is our school has school Monday through Thursday, everyone knows that. But Fridays are optional. However, for all of our seniors who are falling behind, Fridays became mandatory. You have to come to school on Friday. Yesterday, I met with all the students in the morning and afternoon session, and I said, if there's anyone still hanging on a classroom in the first semester, Fridays are no longer an option, you must come. So Friday is becoming that catch-up day to get them in the building because if we don't make them do some things, they'll do as they wish, but we need to support them and we need to bring them in the building to do that. Priority interim goal number two, again, is the one that ties back in. Same information, funding sources the same, and our data results. And here, again, we only have the October data, but I can tell you in November and December and January, I think, I know November, December, we've taken kids to take the WIN test. So we have moved that ASVAB, I think, to five. I think WIN now is up to 12 or 13 students. So we've increased the number of students that have obtained those scores to be CCR. And we're somewhat limited, so ASVAB and WIN is our biggest bang for a buck. So we're trying to make sure those tests are available to our students in the building as often as possible to give them a better chance of being successful because that is a part of our report cards as well. And the third interim performance goal, again, talks about the graduation rate. And of course, I have a lot more action plan and activities listed there. Some of those are repeated, some of those are new. But that's all of the things, not all of the things. It's a list of some of the things that we're doing. And just like the other slides, the funding source and the data source of how we're going to calculate what we're doing and share that with the State Department on the due date of August. Some of the data will be similar, as you see at the bottom left-hand screen, so I won't go over those again. It's the same information. But at the top, we're looking at our graduation claim. Our 9GR 17, those students who came to high school 2016 and 17, we're required to get them out in their four-year cohort. So June of 2020, I need to get those kids across the stage. You notice that number 52, so 12 of the seniors in the building are actually in that 9GR. Unfortunately, we have 13 that's listed as juniors that are supposed to graduate this year. So if you look at the 23% of the seniors we have and the 25% of juniors we have, if we were to get all of our seniors and push our juniors to also graduate, even then, we're at about a 48% graduation rate. That would be about an 18% increase from where we are this year, but obviously, it's not our 70. Not saying that our sophomore and our freshman can't make it, but we have a tough time trying to make sure we can get all those guys across in a short period of time. So that number 52 can change depending upon if students decide they want to go someplace else. As long as they go to another legitimate school, that number 52, my denominator, could very well change. And then our dropouts. We have students that have come to the school that realize it wasn't for them, but because they ended at my school, they're connected to me through the beds code. Those students may go to adult ed, but they're still my school, my students. I still have to track them with to go to GED program or they just never make it in that four-year cohort. They still count against our numbers. And so with our numbers being small, every single number can hurt us greatly or can help us greatly, depending on their activity. Our enrollment, they're now doing a 45-day and 135-day enrollment checks. We had 105 at the 45-day mark and 110 at the 135-day mark. Our capacity is 120 students. I will tell you, we have less than 80 students in the building right now. That's what I was going to share earlier. So there's a large gap in our capacity of 120 students. Part of that is, I think Mr. Shad asked me one year, what are we doing to receive students or how to receive students? I'm having more genuine conversation with parents now as they come in. Just yesterday, I had a parent who came to me, and based on the status for a student and where he was academically, I shared with her honestly that I think I would hurt your child more than I helped your child because he's coming from a structured school and a limited number of credits that he's earned to come to my school, which is somewhat virtual and self-paced and independent. If he doesn't have the strength, he's going to fall to the side. And I don't want to hurt him, and at the same time, he would hurt our numbers, and we're trying to improve. So I'm having those conversations. Parents are very understanding. I tell them I'm trying to be as honest and open as possible. It's still their decision, and so our enrollment has gone down. It costs us, of course, revenue, but at the same time, I'm trying to save the school. So bring the money, save the school, it's one of those things. So I'm trying to balance that as best I can with our enrollment. This is a picture of our data wall. I'm a visual person. And so this year, I asked the staff to help me out with identifying, put our students' names on cards by color. And I didn't think about this. My daughter happens to represent this organization called AKA, and I have a lot of pink and green cards on my wall, I noticed earlier. My green cards to the far left represent my seniors who are 9GR 17. Those are students that I have to get across the stage this year. If you notice in that second column, there's green cards over there, which means those students are a year behind. I need to get them into that senior status and eventually across the stage. So that's our visual. And when we have students that have earned credits, because they can earn those credits at any time, not the end of a semester, I like to be able to go in and move a card every now and then. If I can move that card from left to right, left to right, that's our goal, to get all those cards over. Of course, the second column is our 9GR 18 students. They have another year, I have until June of '21 to get them across. And of course, that third column, I have some yellow cards. So you can see my vision. I'm trying to see as we sit there at our board meetings and our staff meetings, and we're going to start having more data meetings with me directly with the teachers. Come in and tell me who's not making the grade in your class. What are your strategies? What are we doing so we can continue to move these numbers and these students' names? I'm sorry. This is just an example. We do this every single month, so I can show you August through January from this school year. This is an example of a calendar I shared with our staff, and it shows that every single Friday, because Friday mornings are our time to get together, we have different things scheduled, starting at 12:30 usually. We have a leadership team every other Tuesday. We had one this morning at 7:30 in the morning. We have our blended learning because we are going more from virtual to a blended learning environment. So we're talking about strategies. We're doing professional development. I'm talking to Blended Learning University, get them to come into the building to talk to us more about how do we need to do our blended learning process in our school? Then our monthly staff meetings also. So we have a calendar every single month about the things that we're doing in the building to help improve our school. Another example, the principal meeting agenda. You see to the top right-hand side, Transformation Coach, Malika Stubbs, that's the State Department point of contact. She pulls me in every Thursday at 9 o'clock, and we sit for an hour and a half, and we go over different things over the agenda. We do our celebrations, our warm-ups. This is just the first page of about a three-page document, and we keep our notes to the right. These things are also going to help me in presenting to the diagnostic review team when they come. I can just upload these same forms, and they can see the things that we're doing in the school to try to improve the school. And this is an ongoing weekly thing that I have. Not only does she meet with me, and we have a principal agenda, she also has individual coaching sessions with all the staff. She sits with the English teacher, the math teacher, the school counselor. She sits with everyone in the building on a particular day to do the same thing as for us coaching. Our SIT team meetings, again, it's a two-hour, I think 12:30 to 2:30. On the Friday that's prescribed, we have our norms in the right-hand side. And again, agenda items and our notes to the far right. So we have an ongoing working document. And all this is in our school Google Drive, so teachers and faculty can see it at any given time, anytime they want to look at it. As I get nearer in, I still like to address the success of our students. We're small. Last year, we had 33 graduates walk across the stage. You all were there, which was our largest graduating class. Of those 33 students, 12 of them went to college. So I tell people, our students still go to college. Two of them went to the military, and one actually came back to tell me thank you or tell us thank you and visit us recently this year. 16 are employed, and there's three that we haven't really reached out to or couldn't find. I should say, we reached out, couldn't find out exactly where they were. But that's tracking our 33 graduates from last year. I'm probably over the time. I didn't look at a clock, but I was trying my best, Dr. Davis. I was trying, Dr. Davis, because I got 17 emails telling me I had five minutes. And I'm not there quick. But that's all that I have, barring any question you have with me.
Dr. Johnson?
Dr. Mills, thank you so much. I don't have any questions for the first time since I've been on the school board. I want to applaud the charter school. This is the first time you guys have presented a report so detailed and very transparent. So I want to say thank you to your board and to you and your team. Bravo. I have no questions for the first time for charter school. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm marking that on a calendar. All right, other board members, questions or comments?
I'll look for it on YouTube.
Dr. Mills, thank you for the very thorough report. I appreciate you and your board and the effort that y'all are making for improvements at the school. It's obvious that you're working very hard to continue to improve in the areas that you're working on. So thank you so much for the report, and thanks for being with us tonight.
And if I may, I think I forgot, but I do have staff with me as well. My school counselor, my work-based coordinator, my security officer, my lab facility, and my assistant principal slash math teacher. We wear two, three different hats. Someone were here for me, so I wanted to acknowledge it to be here as well. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda, we have the draft or capital improvements. Sorry, I was trying to skip Will. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Mr. Will Anderson is here to provide you with a brief update regarding our capital improvements. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Dr. Davis, I'll make this brief. You all, good evening, and this is our monthly report that we do every month for the bond referendum updates. You all have a more detailed report as part of your board docs to get more information, but I wanted to share briefly with the public and with you all updates since our last meeting in December, some of those bigger updates. Our 15 front entrances are wrapping up. You've got the report on those. Mostly, it's punchless items. We have a few glass issues, and then we also are working diligently with our IT department. But those will be done. Lake Carolina and Bridge Creek, since we last met, are finished. That's a photo of Bridge Creek, I believe, their entrance, and so we're happy to report that. The HVAC replacement projects at Killian Bookman in Rice Creek, those are being through Johnston Controls, and they will begin in March. CFK North had a great groundbreaking, very cold, but very awesome groundbreaking last week. Thank you for all being there. Very exciting, the project's moving along great. So very exciting times for that. But we kicked off CFK North, and as we get more and more information, we'll continue to provide that with you all. Our stadiums, we actually are doing bid work, bid in February 11th right now. So we'll have our bid review, and hopefully shortly thereafter, construction will start. At the last board meeting, I had a parent come and speak. We've since have spoken with the SIC at Richland Northeast about the stadium. Very productive, great meeting, and about their other improvements at their school, which I'll get to in a second. And then we also are going to meet with Ridgeview High School about their stadium on the 3rd. That's the same contractor, same architect, so they're on the same timeline. Blythewood High School, bid review is coming February. We met with the contractor last week. Bids are coming in. We'll have bid review, I believe, the 18th with construction starting shortly thereafter. So getting really close on those projects there. The Support Service Center, the Operations Department, that's been, that building is being renovated. Remember, we talked about the sinking floor. You can see we're digging inside deep, working the construction zone right now. Our staff over there have been great, working through the major renovations, but there's a progressing with Phase 1 being, or Phase 2 should be complete March 13th, with substantial completion in August. This is Bethel Hanbury Elementary School, a very conceptual schematic design. We're nearing the end of schematic design for Bethel Hanbury. Excited about the future of that. Met with the town of Blythewood yesterday about the park and Bonney Road, and are meeting with Richland County Transportation Department on Thursday to talk more about that as well. So looking forward to continue getting close to the end of that schematic design So looking forward to continue getting close to the end of that schematic design and moving forward into the more design development of that school. E.L. Wright, once again, another early design proposal of what may, what E.L. Wright and Center for Knowledge may look like. We have, as a reminder, on February the fifth at six o'clock, we have a community meeting that the community is invited, hope that many of you can attend if your schedule permits. That'll be February fifth at six at E.L., at the current E.L. Wright. Looking for a lot of more, a lot more feedback so we can help drive the design, but very positive on the where we're going with the design of this school and hope to see you next Wednesday. This is just a R&amp;E. We're getting very close to the end of schematic design for Richland Northeast. Tony, am I doing it right? There you go. This might just be a picture, but anyway, there was a, it's going to be a video, but this is kind of schematic of what the auditorium could look like. It's really what we're getting excited about, the facelift of the auditorium and the rest of the school really mirrors the architecture there at R&amp;E. So getting closer to the end of schematic design and moving into more conceptual. This is also of what we're looking at for the courtyard of, interior courtyard of R&amp;E. So very excited and listen, had some, had some, a lot of feedback and talking to their SIC and others, and so we're excited about what's come with R&amp;E. They're still on timeline and in budget, so they're scheduled to start construction in January of two thousand twenty-one, but these are some of the very early schematic design viewings that we're getting for Richland Northeast High School. And as always, as a reminder, our website is up to date. Thanks to Ms. Ruth, she actually did some more updates today with our subcontractors are listed for Center for Knowledge North and the Support Service Center. So those are located, and as soon as we get more and more subcontractors, if these buildings start to go into ground, we'll continue to update that information. With that, that was less than five minutes, and I'll take any questions.
All right, board members, questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Mackey.
Just thank you for your transparency. I thank you for keeping us updated. You said that you would in the beginning of this bond process, and we have not missed a time that you said you would report, and also just reminding people that this bond information is available online as well on Richland Two's website. So I just appreciate you keeping us abreast of, you know, the good, bad, and the ugly, and making sure that we know publicly what's going on. And I just appreciate you keeping us abreast and making sure that the public also has the opportunity to know what the progress is with regard to the facilities. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you for y'all's feedback, your questions, and everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Augustine.
And this is just one request. Thank you again for your presentation. Enjoyed getting the printout, the breakdown of everything, and like seeing the start dates, but could we get potential finish dates or suggested finish dates in there as well?
Sure, of course.
All right, thank you.
Okay, other board members, questions or comments? All right, thank you, Will.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the draft agenda items for February eleventh, two thousand twenty. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you would look at the February the eleventh, two thousand twenty regular scheduled board meeting, we will have our, we will begin our board meeting and call the order at five-thirty. We'll have, we'll convene to executive session where we'll discuss admission requests into the district's adult education program, student appeals. We will resume public session at six-thirty. We'll have our inspirational moment, approval of the current agenda. We'll have special recognitions. We'll have ask for approval of the consent agenda. We'll have the school focus, which will be Bridge Creek, public participation, our legislative update, and voting on executive session items, which includes our student appeals, our student admission requests into the district's adult ed program, and any items as needed, let's discuss in executive session. We'll have, under old business, no action requested. We'll bring before you the proposal for policy revisions to GBAA that is sex/gender discrimination and harassment. We'll ask for the approval of the draft agenda for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty board meeting. We will have public participation number two, if that's needed, as well as board and superintendent comments. If there's a need for an executive session number two, we'll have that, as well as voting on items in the executive session number two, and then we'll ask for the adjournment.
Okay, board members, questions or comments? And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the draft agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the February eleventh, two thousand twenty school board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Coin toss, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Thank you. Do I have any comments? All right, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes six to one. Next is our public participation number two. I have no one signed up, so we will move on to our favorite item of the night, our board and superintendent comments. I will start at my left and move to my right. Mr. Shad.
Nothing to add to the discussion other than congratulations to my friend and colleague, Dr. Monica Elkins, on her public service to our students for thirty years plus. We appreciate your service, and I know you're looking forward to the next chapter in your life.
All right, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Hallelujah, Dr. James Shad. I just have something that I would like to read, and it just states, "Good evening. I come before you this evening with a humble heart full of Thanksgiving." And I start with a quote. It says, "Today, we are living longer and retiring earlier, allowing us twenty-five or more years to pursue lifelong goals and passions. Rather than fading into the sunset, we have time to rediscover our personal uniqueness, deepen relationships, and question the mysteries of life. God, who I give honor to each and every day, has provided for me throughout these thirty-two years as an educator. He brought me from being a teacher assistant to a teacher, from being an assistant principal to principal, and from a college adjunct professor and educational consultant to this point where I am today. Even after announcing my retirement, many doors continue to open for me. God has been good to me, but most importantly over the years, God allowed me to be a school mom and school grandma to so many. I have watched my students and former students become successful citizens, and many of them has emulated several aspects of my personal style and characteristics, to include even becoming themselves educators, and allow me to pin them into the first and the best and the only sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Moreover, moreover, even during seasons of loss, sadness, hardships, God gave me the strength to get through it all, taking me over hills and mountains. And for all of the ones that he didn't take me over, he moved those mountains, so I give him all of the praise. Because of God, students, parents, and colleagues, I made it. And all of you have played a major part in my life, whether it was coaching, mentoring, interviewing, been a positive role model, et cetera. In the words of Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed people can change the world." And that is what many of you have done for me. Thank you for all of your love and support and sharing in my celebration. But before I do that, I do want to acknowledge a few of Richland Two people who have played a major role in my life. Dr. Sean Suber, Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, Wendy Evering, Beth Elliott, Davida Price, SRO Joe Kelly, SRO Tim Ford, SRO Tacoma Letson, SRO Greg Chandler, Dr. Figueroa, Ms. Lottie Chisen, Dr. Caution Parker, who back then was Ms. Wa, um, Dr. Washington, Laura Popovich, Stephanie McKenny, Janet Williams, Betty Corbin, Rob Heron, Tommy Hill, Dr. Sabrina Suber, Alan Upchurch, and Stacy Gadsden. I want to say thank you for allowing me to serve thirty-two years as an educator, and just know, I'm retiring as an educator. My life will continue on, and most definitely, I have even more time to spend on Richland District Two school board. Thank you. And also, I want to say thank you to Representative Leon Howard. It really meant a lot to me for you to come and present this award to me. Thank you for not seeing it as a robbery, but just recognizing my passion, my love, and my commitment to be a servant leader. So thank you so much, and you will always be my number one representative. Thank you so much.
Dr. Caution Parker.
No comments, just everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Dr. Holmes.
First, let me correct, Dr. Elkins, there is another wonderful sorority that is Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. But thank you, Dr. Elkins. But I'd also like to congratulate you on your retirement. It's hard getting to these thirty-something years. I won't be far behind you after that. But anyway, also, Representative Howard, my dear friend, thank you for, it's good to see you out here. I see Overture, I see Overture Walker out here too, and Shelley Williams, thank y'all for coming too. I just wanted to say, I want to reiterate one more time, please, 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 take a look at that bill, S four one nine. You have to call your senators. You have to. And remember, when it's time to vote, you can make the change. Seven of us can't make the change, but as a collective, we can make the change. Look at that bill and put pressure on them to stop it. But with that, y'all have a good evening.
All right, Ms. Mackey.
I have much left to say, but to echo the sentiments of my colleagues before me, and for those who have to be here this evening, bless you with microphones, for those who choose to be here and have stayed the entire time. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a great evening.
Ms. Agostini.
I too want to congratulate Dr. Elkins on her retirement and thank her for her thirty-year commitment to education and, more importantly, to students. And also, I want to acknowledge Ms. Anjali and Mr. J. Raj Ashwin. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to an announcement at Spring Valley High School, where this generous family this year is giving five, five thousand dollar scholarships to Spring Valley High School graduates. They're doing it in honor of their son, who is a remarkable young man, now an assistant professor at the University of Michigan, Go Blue, but they're doing it. And he started off, similar to my kids, as a private school kid who switched to public school and has just thrived. So in honor of their son, he learned through winter days to give back at Spring Valley High School, but they're giving back to our district, to our students, five, five thousand dollar scholarships. So I want to thank them publicly here.
That's incredible. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forest Lake Elementary and Spring Valley High School have earned the title of National Magnet Schools of Excellence from Magnet Schools of America. Forest Lake earned the recognition for the NASA Explorer School Magnet and Spring Valley for Discovery and Exploration Magnets. We have more winners. The following nine schools have earned Magnet Schools of Distinction Honor. They're Bridge Creek, Forest Lake, Conda Elementary Schools, Dent, E.L. Wright, and Kelly Mill Middle Schools, and Richland Northeast, Ridgeview, and Westwood High Schools. Our 4K Child Development Enrollment opens on Monday, February the third, and remains open throughout most of March. Richland Two offers free 4K child development to students who qualify based on developmental needs, free and reduced price meal status, and other risk factors. More information is available on the homepage of our website. It's tax season, and free tax preparation is available. The Richland Two WR Rogers Adult Continuing and Technology Education Center is once again collaborating with SG Thrive to offer free tax services. Eligible Richland Two employees, families, and community members can meet with a tax counselor to have their two thousand nineteen taxes filed at no cost on Wednesday, February the twelfth, from nine AM to four PM. The adjusted gross income for individual tax filers must be less than sixty-five thousand dollars and less than ninety-five thousand if married and filing jointly. The inaugural Premier One Hundred Conference is just two months away on Saturday, March twenty-eighth, here at Rich, here at R2I2 Conference Center. This conference is open to both aspiring and current educators. While the focus will be centered on supporting the work of male educators of color, the topic's address will support the professional learning of all teachers. I think I'm going from, that's, I think that's it.
You're going to read all the little side notes. You get five minutes, too. So I want to thank everyone for being here. Certainly thank our sheriff again for the report. Representative Howard, again, for all your support in the legislature that you give us. And I know there's been a lot of negative talk about some of the work that's going on in the legislature, but expanded 4K is certainly one that I think is now bipartisan and something that we sorely need in the state for the future of our children. So we're excited to see that gain support across the aisle for our students, since we talked about 4K here tonight. So excited to see that, and I appreciate everyone being here. I think that was all I had, so y'all ready to go home? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair.